Good evening, everyone. Sorry for the delay, but we're being trained tonight as well, trying to get electronically, so. We're going to start off the meeting as usual with a pledge of allegiance. Mr. Galvery, would you lead us in the pledge, please? Thank you all for coming tonight, and I will add now that if you have a telephone or other electronic device, that you either turn it off or make sure it's on vibrate, so it won't disturb us during the meeting. Sarah, I'll now come to you for roll call and determination of quorum.
Mr. Peterman?
Present.
Mr. Servon?
Present.
Mrs. Carter?
Present.
Mr. Galvery?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Jester?
Here.
So you have seven present, you two have a quorum.
You also have in front of you tonight the agenda. If there's no corrections, deletions, or additions, I will ask for a motion. Denise?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Call the commission, please.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Servon?
Yes, to approve.
Mrs. Carter? Mr. Galvery?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, to approve.
So you have seven ayes in favor of approving tonight's agenda.
Thank you very much. You've also, commissioners had passed out to you the minutes for February 13th, 2025. Once again, if there's no additions, corrections, or additions, or anything else, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Peterman?
To approve to me.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Sarah, call the commission.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Servon?
Yes, to approve.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Galvery?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, to approve.
So you have seven ayes in favor of approving the minutes of February 13th.
Next, as shown on the agenda, you have levy court action with our recommendations, and if you have any questions, you can see staff later on. We'll now get into our business tonight, and like I said, this is the March 13th business meeting for the Regional Planning Commission. First on the agenda is SL-25-01, The Landing North, request for major subdivision approval for a 10-single-family lot located outside the growth zone overlay district. I think they answered most of our questions last week, and I think if anybody here wants to look, I think Sarah's told me that the site evaluations or some of the soil sample things are in with the county planning department. We didn't receive them, but does anybody have any questions before we get into this particular motion? Seeing none, I will entertain. Would somebody like to make a motion? Mr. Galvery?
I move that the Regional Planning Commission deny conditional approval of application SL-2501, The Landing North, a preliminary plan for a 10-lot, single-family residential subdivision located outside the growth zone overlay district.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Sarah, call the commission.
Mr. Peterman?
I vote no.
I think we better hold up. I don't think all the motion was read. Am I correct? Did you read the bottom part of the motion? Okay, very good. You've got it all taken care of. Okay, I guess we're good then, sir. Continue with calling the commissioners.
Mr. Peterman?
I vote to deny.
So that's the vote yes.
Question on the motion, is that approval or a denial? I didn't hear it.
It is a motion to deny.
Thank you.
Mr. Servon?
I vote no.
Mrs. Carter?
No.
Mr. Galvery?
No. I vote yes to deny the conditional approval.
Mr. Mills?
I vote yes to deny.
Mr. Davis?
I vote yes to deny, and I will state the reason why I'm voting to deny this. I'm very concerned about the environmental impact they have in there with. I asked the question last week if they had what type of septic system, and they said they're working on it. Well, that doesn't give me the answer I need. Even though they indicate that the marshland is a long distance away from these proposed houses, they've got to understand that water table, you go out to the marsh and take the depth of the water table and take the depth of where these houses will be built, the water table is equal. So I know that area very well, and they have a lot of flooding up there. We heard testimony from some of their neighbors who have flooding. I have a major concern about the septic system being infiltrated into the marshland. We don't need people dumping things into the marshland, and I'm not really happy about putting swales down there. And we need to protect our wildlife, we need to protect the environment, and I don't know how they're going to get a well. That was their concern. But I don't support it because there's a lot of issues there that should not happen. We cannot destroy flooding down there and the sewer water getting into the marshland. It would destroy our marshland, and that's why I'm voting no. Well, I rephrase that. Ours, y'all, already know yes and no. I'm voting yes to deny it, yes.
Mr. Jester?
I'm voting yes to deny.
Sir, you have a vote of five ayes, two nays, in favor of denying application SL-2501.
Thank you, commissioners. Next on the agenda tonight is CS-25-04, First State Animal Center, SPCA, request to amend the zoning map from AR, Ag Residential, and BG, General Business, to BG, General Business, located outside the growth zone overlay district. I think they give a very well-explained thing last week, and I will now open it up to the commissioners. Somebody would like to make a motion? Raise your hand, and I'll identify you. Denise?
I move that the Regional Planning Commission recommend conditional approval of application CS-25-04, a conditional use site plan for a commercial kennel located outside the growth zone overlay district, including approval of the waiver from subsection 187-60 A and B requiring installation. And this is based on Exhibit A, Staff Recommendation Report dated March 6, 2025. Exhibit B, Public Hearing Testimony dated March 6, 2025, and the findings of fact that, A, the subject site is zoned AR and Subchapter 205-53 permits commercial kennels as a conditional use; B, the location is appropriate, not in conflict with the comprehensive plan; C, the public health, safety, and general welfare will not be adversely affected. Pursuant to Chapters 187 and 205 of the Kent County Code and pursuant to nine Delaware Subchapters 4802 and 4811, the commission has reviewed the application and the March 6, 2025 Staff Recommendation Report, and furthermore, as part of this approval, the applicant shall comply with all staff and agency requirements as described in the March 6, 2025 Staff Recommendation Report, and the following conditions: A, the number of animals housed on the site shall be limited to 20; B, landscaping shall be installed in accordance with the revised plans that were submitted on March 10, 2025; and C, a four-foot split-rail vinyl fence shall be installed along the road frontage and a six-foot opaque fence along the eastern property line.
I have a motion. Somebody like to make a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Davis made a second. Sarah, call the commission.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Servon?
Yes, to approve.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes, to approve, and I just want to put in here, I know that the motion talked about kennels, but it has been described very accurately to us as a sanctuary.
Mr. Galvery?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, to approve, and I was there today, and the changing of the buffers and the fence over fronts, I think will greatly add to the location.
So you have seven ayes in favor of recommending conditional approval of application CS-2504.
Thank you, and best of luck with your location. Pardon me. We'll now go to our next application, and this is one tonight, is S-24-08, Lighthouse Church. African owner is Lighthouse Church Smyrna Incorporated, Drew Matthews, PO Box 936 Smyrna Delaware. Engineer is the PELSA Company. Zoning District is BG. Comp map designation is Highway Commercial. Relation to growth zone is inside. Present use is vacant. Proposed use is a church. Proposed building size is 14,300 square feet. Water is Artesian well and Kent County Public Works. It is actually Levy Court District for Mrs. Mastin. School District is Smyrna. Fire District is Smyrna Station 44. It's on 4.06 acres located on the north side of Big Woods Road. I know we haven't taken any testimony, and if the commissioners don't have any questions about this, I won't call anybody to the mic, but does anybody have any questions?
Was there a reason why we didn't have any testimony on it? Okay, I mean, that's fine.
Yeah, this is because of the way it comes up, and Sarah might want to explain it, because it's not part of our public meeting, but when we look at this ourselves, and if we have questions, we can then call somebody to the mic. You have any question, Mr. Mills? Seeing none, would somebody like to make a motion? Mr. Galvery?
I move that the Regional Planning Commission grant conditional approval of application S-2408, a site plan for a 14,300-square-foot church located inside the growth zone overlay district. This is based on Exhibit A, Staff Recommendation Report dated March 13, 2025, and the findings of fact that, A, the subject site is zoned BG, General Business, and Subchapter 205-53 permits houses of worship as permitted use; B, the location is appropriate and not in conflict with the comprehensive plan; C, the public health, safety, and general welfare will not be adversely affected. Pursuant to Chapters 187 and 205 of the Kent County Code and pursuant to nine Delaware, C, Subchapter 4802 and 4811, the commission has reviewed the application and the March 13, 2025 Staff Recommendation Report, and furthermore, as part of this approval, the applicant shall comply with all state and agency requirements as described in the March 13, 2025 Staff Recommendation Report.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sarah, call the commission.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Servon?
Yes, to approve.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes, to approve, but I don't think it's only going to be children that are in all those classrooms at all. It says kids on everything.
Mr. Galvery?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, to approve.
So you have seven ayes in favor of granting conditional approval of the application S-2408.
Thank you all, and good luck with your project. Final one on our business tonight is actually S-25-02, Killens Pond State Park. Zoning District is AC, Agriculture Conservation. Present use is a state park. Proposed use is a same with expansion. Proposed building sizes are going to total a number of 3,032 square feet. Area and location is 125 plus or minus acres, located on the north side of Paradise Alley Road and the west side of Killens Pond Road, southeast of Felton. I have some questions. Is there somebody here representing this application tonight? Please come to the mic, give us your name and address, and if our attorney's on the phone, you will be either sworn or affirmed.
All right. Well, good evening. I'm Alex Schmidt with Century Engineering, 550 Bay Road Dover, Delaware. Just so you're aware, also on the phone is a representative of State Parks, Bill Miller, if we have any questions for him.
The attorney can swear him in.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're to give is the truth?
I do.
Okay, I personally have a couple of questions for you. I notice you're going to have quite a few camp sites out there. Exactly what are the camp sites going to consist of? Are they going to have water and sewer, or just water, or what?
So there's two phases to this expansion, and we're taking the entire thing through the county one time, so we don't have to come back. The first phase is the camp store and the reconfiguration of the entrance and the new dump station. The second phase will be an expansion to add RV sites that will be a three-point hookup. Neither of these are funded for construction yet, so we don't have a timeline, but if I were to take some guesses, I would think that that RV expansion you're referring to is probably a 10-year or more horizon.
Seeing that, I'm a member of the local fire department in Felton, and I know you're going to have, I think, 75 camp spots or something in that order. Is there going to be onsite water that we'll be able to use for firefighting? Because I've seen campers catch on fire and be close, and when we've had the winds that we've had in the back two weeks, I know you need a lot of water. Is there going to be any kind of hydrants or water supply on site?
So there is an onsite well there. We will be supplying water to the campground with yard hydrants for use. They don't typically have the same flow rate as a hydrant would on a public water supply well. And as I mentioned, since that's the second phase, and we haven't gotten into the detailed design of that yet, and we haven't gone to the fire marshal with that, but typically, when we do go to the fire marshal, we also consult with the local company to make sure if you have equipment that needs to get there, or you've got specific concerns. And so if you brought that up when we get to that point, we would definitely work to accommodate you.
I appreciate that, because I think it's very much needed down there. I think you're being overwhelmed with campers right now, because people want to go, and you don't have any place for them to go. Am I correct?
That's exactly what State Parks has seen, so.
So that means more money in the till for the state. That's what I always like to see. We're always creating new state. Does anybody else here have any questions for Denrick or Mr. Galvery?
Just a comment. Killens is one of my favorite state parks, and my wife and I go there at least four times a month, I think. And I noticed the areas, we've actually used the cabins on a couple of occasions, too. So some of this that I saw outside of the expansion is actually badly needed, that the entranceway really could use some help, and so could the store that you've got there. So I looked through all of it, and it seems like it's going to be a nice addition to it. I know a lot of people enjoy it, so I think even more so now. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's very beautiful down there. I've used that pavilion. I think it's Pavilion 4?
I'm pardoned to say it again.
The pavilion on that site? I think it's Pavilion 4. I like the way it's closed, and we've used it a couple of times. So very good. Nobody else has any questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming to the mic. I have no questions. Is the gentleman on the phone, would he like to say anything?
This is Bill Miller. I'm a capital program administrator with Delaware State Parks. Apologize for not being there in person. I don't have anything additional to add, but if you had any more questions, I'd be happy to answer on behalf of Delaware State Parks.
We appreciate you being on the phone. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Opening up to the commissioners now for a motion?
I'll move.
Mr. Mills?
I'm moving. I move the Regional Planning Commission grant conditional approval of the application S-25-02, a site plan for expansion of the state park with entities preliminary inside the growth zone overlay district. This is based on Exhibit A, Staff Recommendation Report dated March 13, 2025, and the findings of the facts that, A, the subject site is zoned AC, Agriculture Conservation, and 205-53 permits load intensity recreational use as a permitted use; B, the location is appropriate and not in conflict with the comprehensive plan; C, the public health, safety, and general welfare will not adversely be affected. Pursuant to Chapter 187 and 205 of the Kent County Code and pursuant to nine Dolc, C4802 and 4811, the commission has reviewed the application and the March 13, 2025 Staff Recommendation Report, and furthermore, as part of this approval, the applicant shall comply with all staff and agency requirements as described in the March 13, 2025 Staff Recommendation Report.
Second.
I have a motion. Denise?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Sarah, call the commission.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Servon?
Yes, to approve.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Galvery?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, to approve.
So you have seven ayes in favor of granting conditional approval of the application S-2502.
Thank you, and good luck with your project, and we'll be looking forward to you in the future.
Thank you, everyone.
And to other public comment? Gentleman on the front row, looks like our only public here, so I don't know. You'll have to come up to the mic, sir, and give us your name and address. Okay. I know you're with the newspaper, so that's okay. You can talk to Sarah after the meeting. Down to commission comments?
Yes. What's the chance there of people like myself is not the speed on learning how to use this program, where we can come up here and somebody gives instruction? Number one, I don't know how to do that pacing stuff, okay? I can use a computer pretty well, but number one, I guess it's the password. They're very lengthy. I think it's 14 components to that. That's a long password, but my main concern is really to learn how to use it and be very effective with it. I could do much better. Mr. Peterman wants to come to class, too, but I think we need to have a class on it. For me, I'll speak for myself, it's very complicated.
Well, if the commissioners are interested in coming in early before the next scheduled meeting, we can try to coordinate with our friends in IT.
How long is it going to take a dummy like me to learn it? 20 minutes might not. Like, you couldn't do it tonight. It wasn't right. She ain't tried to do it tonight, because he was doing his best. Three people here. You can't come in here and learn this thing in five minutes. I'll speak for myself. Now, so if I have a problem, can I come in, somebody in IT, and sit down with me privately and show me? Because it takes me a while to learn it.
Why don't we coordinate with IT, and we'll come up with times when they can be available for you?
I wanted to do it, I want to do it right.
Thank you very much. Any more comments for commissioners? If not, other business? Any other business? Entertain a motion to adjourn? Mr. Peterman?
I should adjourn.
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Galvery. Call the commission.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Servon?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Galvery?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, oh, yes, to adjourn. Mr. Servon, it was good to hear you online tonight, too.
Thank you very much. Glad to hear you guys, too.